Okay.
Good Lord, man.
Look, no more.
Be good.
Just wing it today. We don't need to pack it, it's okay.
Whatever.
Got it locked up?
I'm trying. My computer is giving me.
No problems here.
I'm almost out of it.
Mine's there. We're good.
I'm good.
I'll get there.
I loaded yesterday, but it wouldn't let me do the hyperlink.
I looked at everything over the weekend on you. But, uh.
All right.
Let's go. Don't worry about it.
I call this meeting to order. This, uh, regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting for Sweetwater County on the twentieth of December. It is, uh, quorum is present here. We have all of our commissioners present in chambers today and, uh, we'll mention that it's the final meeting for Commissioner Wendling and Commissioner Lloyd and myself. And so, thank you. And actually, while we're goofing around as, as chair and plan this, but I'll just take a moment and say, uh, thank you, Commissioner Wendling, Doc. I appreciate all the time we've spent together and your leadership. I, I think that every decision you make, uh, has Sweetwater County and, and, um, the residents and the employees in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. That back at you.
Commissioner Lloyd, it's been great to serve with you. You, you have a big heart and it's, uh, you wear it on your sleeve and it's apparent you care very much and much appreciated. Um, and the marination will continue, I'm sure. So, and then Commissioner Shane Feld and Commissioner Toman. Uh, thank you for your time serving here as well. And I'm sure you'll, uh, as you stay on, you'll carry on what's been built way, way even before our time and you'll show these, these new guys what's what. So, uh, over the first few weeks. So, so thank you. Thanks for indulging me there. If you will, um, rise and join in the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence to follow, please. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda that's been presented to us. What is your pleasure with that agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Feld.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding approval of the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Onto tab A. We have consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure there?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that then.
Thank you, Commissioners Shane Feld and Toman. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favors say aye.
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 Any opposed? Onto tab B, public hearing, uh, through planning and zoning. Megan Tumer, we got you on board today. What have you got for us?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, Chairman Smith. Uh, we've got two public hearings for you today. Uh, the first one is a zone map amendment for Casey and Amanda Bruder. Wanting to change their property from currently it's zoned ag and R two, so mixed residential and they're wanting to take it um, completely to agriculture, help to eliminate the spot zoning um, with old regulations that was needed at the time and is no longer needed for their, um, land out, um, off of Sweeney Ranch Road down, uh, southeast of Rock Springs. It's an approximately a thirty-two acre tract of land. Um, direct access is, um, it comes off of Sweeney Ranch Road and crosses BLM to get down to their property. But as you can see in the northeast corner of their property where the current mobile home resides, that acre and a half is zoned R two currently and the rest is zoned ag. Um, what we're here proposing today is to zone the entire thirty-two acre parcel to agriculture. Um, again, this would, um, help eliminate spot zoning in the area and also giving him the freedom to use the entire parcel as ag, not having to deal with extra setbacks. Um, uh, with how the R two property is out there, he's wanting to build another, uh, stick built residence out there and wants to set it back a little bit further with the current zoning and everything out, out there. He would be restricted by additional setbacks, um, because there's two zones out there. Um, so just trying to clean the area up a little bit and, uh, make it more user friendly, um, and, uh, fitting the, just the area in general out there. Um, as you can see, Mr. Jim Zimmerman, uh, went out and posted our public notice, uh, and took pictures, um, documenting so. And we'll jump straight into the review criteria for this own map amendment. Uh, first, is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? Uh, staff finds that it is, as it encourages growth and development, um, to continue in orderly manner. Um, second criteria is the proposed zoning suitable for the existing topography and creates buildable lots. Uh, thirty-two acres, a lot of people would, uh, kill to have thirty-two acres to build and, and do as they wish on there. So plenty, plenty of opportunity for, uh, buildability out there and existing topography. Um, doesn't really create any hardships out there. Um, the area to the north and south of this purple parcel are also currently zoned agricultural as well. Um, criteria number three, is it existing, uh, compatible with existing allowable uses? Um, it's in a pretty ag, uh, friendly neighborhood. Uh, the properties to the east and west are zoned rural residential. Um, so pretty close to, uh, agricultural zoning, just a little minor tweaks, uh, keeping it a little more uh, residential friendly, but, uh, staff still doesn't see any concerns and it would help us in cleaning up all the spots, uh, one of the areas of spot zoning that we still have here in the county. Uh, criteria number four, is there adequate, um, public facilities on the property as this is an existing site? All, um, existing infrastructure and things needed are, are, uh, there's no proposal for any new things out there. So we're good. Uh, criteria number five, this does not adversely affect adjacent properties. Um, we have not received any negative comments and staff does not foresee any problems with this. So another positive. And the last, um, is the request conforms with all applicable provisions of the Sweetwater County zoning resolution, which it does. Uh, when we sent this out for public and agency comment, we did not receive anything back. Um, so we're good there.
That's a solid slider. I like that. More of those are good, right?
Definitely. We, we don't mind that. Um, at the planning and zoning meeting last week, uh, the planning and zoning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval um, for this zone map amendment. That's all I have for this public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Tumer? Regarding this. Seeing none, then we will open for a public hearing. Do you have any comments regarding this action? Please step to the microphone at the podium, speak into the microphone, state who you are and who you're representing. Thank you.
Um, my name is Casey Bruder. This is my property and, uh, I just wanted to thank Megan for taking the time to help me, uh, work through this, this issue when we bought the property. We, um, had some plans for it and I reached out to the county before we purchased the property to make sure that we could, use it as we needed. And I think this, uh, zoning amendment will help us, uh, not have to worry so much about exactly where we place a couple of buildings that we want to build and develop that property. So, um, it's just, I, I think it'll help us out to, to utilize the property and I'm appreciative of all her help, uh, getting, getting to where we're at. So, any questions or?
Questions at all? Well, thank you. Always good to hear praise for the good work that's done. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments during our public hearing? And we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twelve dash Z O dash oh one for approval of a zoning map amendment from agricultural A and mixed residential R two, the agricultural A requested by Casey Bruder as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. We're back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, our second hearing today is for a property that's owned by John and Rita Isaacson. Um, they own about thirty-seven acres just south of double J subdivision. If you guys know where that's at, um, out off of Yellowstone Road, north of Rock Springs. Um, currently they are proposing to do a twelve, uh, lot subdivision out there. Um, because it's a major subdivision, you guys won't actually see the full blown subdivision in details. Um, completed to that, uh, till we get to the final plot stage. Um, just so you guys know, the preliminary plot was, um, approved at the planning and zoning meeting last week. Um, but the hearing that we're here for today is for a variance for a lot to depth width ratio on one of the, the lots, um, in this proposed subdivision lot two. Um, we'll jump right in. As you can see, the current property is zoned R two SF, which is, uh, mixed family residential and does have a lot size overlay on it of two acres. Um, none of the lots are going to be less than two acres, which is a good thing. I would say most of the lots, about ninety percent of them are between two and two and a half acres with the largest lot being almost twelve acres, which is on the west side. Um, that the Isaacsons will, um, uh, keep their land and, and reside on over there. Um, the lot that we are, um, hearing about today is lot two. So it's just a little bit southeast of where um, Isaacson's currently reside and the minimum a lot depth width ratio per Sweetwater County zoning regulations is two and a half to one. And this lot as proposed is two point six six to one. So just barely over the mark there. So, uh, we are requesting a variance today for this and there we go. Um, uh, and Mr. Jim Zimmerman also posted public notice out, um, on the site and, um, again, this is a, a variance from, uh, current zoning regulations. Um, I did take the liberty just to draw up the lot. So you guys can see that it's still a rather buildable lot. Um, there's about two and a half acres is what the, the lot is proposed sized wise. And there's just under um, two point three acres when you add all the setbacks. So still a, a really good size lot. Um, staff has no concerns there. But with the variance process, we've got three criteria that we need to review. And the first is there are special circumstances or conditions fully described in the commission and board's findings, which are peculiar for the land or building for which the variance is sought and do not generally apply to the land or buildings in the neighborhood and have not resulted from any act of applicant subsequent adoption to the zoning resolution. Um, as I've stated before, sound like a broken record, but, uh, this proposed lot two has a width to lot depth to width ratio of two point six six, which is just over the two and a half to one that's required per our regulations. Um, so it's very minimal. Criteria number two, for reasons fully set forth in the commission and board's findings, the circumstances or conditions are such that strict application of the provisions of Sweetwater County zoning resolution would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land or building and granting the adjustment is necessary or reasonable thereof. The adjustment as granted is the minimal adjustment that will accomplish this purpose. Um, this, the proposed John and Reza, Rita Isaacson subdivision is twelve lots. Um, all eleven, eleven of these twelve lots meet this, um, with lot width to depth ratio, uh, proposed lot two is the only one that doesn't. And it, the proposed layout, which they have gone with is making all the lots buildable. Um, it's just, just a slight variance, um, in my opinion, that they are requesting here today. And the third and final, um, criteria for this variance is the granting of this variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning resolution and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Um, and staff does not have any concerns, uh, with this criteria. Again, we put this out for comments for public and agency and didn't receive any concerns back.
Another excellent slide. Well done.
And, uh, at the planning and zoning commission meeting last week, the planning and zoning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval, um, of this variance. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. And the applicant and applicant, uh, engineer is here as well.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Tumer? Thank you. Then we will open for a public hearing on this matter regarding resolution two-two dash one-two dash Z O dash zero-two. And again, if you have comments regarding this, please step to the podium, speak into the microphone and state your name and who you're representing. It's intimidating a little bit, I know, but welcome.
I'm, uh, Eric Harris. I'm, uh, I work with W H S engineering and I'm excited about this development. It's a wonderful law and we did try to develop on this area so that, um, even this law with the depth, uh, law depth with ratio of two point six six, we allowed for a little bit larger of a lot for this lot because of that purpose. And cutting it so that there was, that it fit the, uh, lot depth with ratio would have meant, um, there'd have been unusual land behind that nobody could use. So I, this was the, the best case scenario that we were hoping for. So.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve. Uh, I don't know the exact number.
Resolution two-two dash one-two dash Z O dash zero-two.
Yes.
Excellent. And do we have a second?
What he said. I'll second what they said.
Perfect. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I just want to throw out that, um, um, I've had the honor over the last year to spend a lot of time in the P and Z meetings and, um, uh, be an active listener in those meetings and the, the work that Eric and Megan and Jim and his team put on and those projects are huge and the, um, the quality of people we have on P and Z is outstanding. And I just want to thank them because when they bring stuff like this to us, our job is so much easier for the work they've done from the committee to, from the board to the, um, employees. And I just wanted to say, thank you. So that was my only comment. We should still affirm and vote yes, but I was more worried about giving those guys kudos. So, there you go.
You're here.
Thank you. Then all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? And Commissioner Shane Feld absent. Thank you. Well done all around. Appreciate that, Megan. We are on to county residents, comments, concerns, and I always put in compliments. It's never on the agenda, but if you have any compliments for us, uh, we appreciate that as well. So again, steps to the mic. If you have any com- comments, then state who you are, who you're representing and happy to hear from you. Hi Candy.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Candy Pendleton with the Sweetwater Events Complex, um, compliments today. So I, um, spoke with the three of you, the three commissioners that are, that are leaving and going on to bigger and better things. But I wanted to publicly say we have appreciated working with you. We appreciate your support. We understand the amount of time that you've given up with your families and with your wives and we appreciate them as well. So thank you again for everything you've done for Sweetwater County. We do appreciate it and it did not go unnoticed on our end. So from our staff and board, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thanks Candy.
That was a great one. Anybody else got a compliment? Compliment? Welcome back.
Hey, welcome back. So you're going to hate me for this because I just made your life easier and I'm about to make it a little harder. Uh, for this, uh, development, there is a, there was an issue of an access point that, uh, we, uh, are developing a brand new road on this, um, Isaacson subdivision. And what are the access points to the existing access point to John and Rita Isaacson's, um, domicile, um, will be no longer in service because of this, um, development, which we're excited about. Um, that being said, we are afraid that it will create a hardship for them, um, during this development. Uh, because they're going to be losing this access point and being, uh, moved to the access point of, uh, the road that they're developing. We were hoping that we'd be able to keep at least temporarily or honestly forever this access point to, uh, double J road, which is, at this point, a collector, but has a potential to become an arterial. And I, I Rita actually brought a few, uh, points that she would like to bring up, uh, to you guys about this, um, desire to keep that access point and perhaps developing another access point to the existing Appaloosa drive or the Appaloosa drive that will be developed, but hoping to keep this other access point there.
Well, I appreciate that. It's probably, not probably, it is a matter that would go planning and zoning first before we would make any decisions at all, you know, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, so preliminary, preliminary plats are not approved at the commissioner level. Uh, they're approved at the planning and zoning commission. So that was approved five to zero with the condition on there that the access be moved. The applicant is more than, um, can apply for an appeal to the board of county commissioners on that preliminary plat. So there's a couple of ways of handling it. They could appeal the preliminary plat, which would need to be heard so that we meet the timeframe at the first meeting in January and we can help them with that process. The other thing is preliminary plat is a preliminary plat. Final plat, you can also bring that up, the access issue again. The problem is, is they've expended a lot of money at final plat. So they probably want to know before they move to that next step that they can move that access. So, um, the applicants more than, uh, we can help them with that process, but that's, that's the procedure for that. And that's why it was not heard today.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, Eric, uh, what's downside?
Um, they, for the applicant, they would have to expend a lot of money. Oh, as far as.
For the county.
Really no downside for us. I, it's, um, the commissioners ultimately make the, the final decision on things. So it's, it's really up the discretion of the board of county commissioners if they, um, as far as what they want to approve or disprove. But for the applicant, it's probably if they don't want to expend any more money into the final plat process. Cause there's a lot of money expended between preliminary and final, because that's when you get into engineering, setting in, uh, plans to de, department environmental quality for the septic systems, the soil report. So if that's truly, uh, what they would like to do, we can help them in that process. There's no downside for us.
No downside.
No.
No, not for road or bridge or anything, Gene? I'm trying to visualize in my mind what all this is.
Okay. Probably better if we pulled it up. So we could.
Please.
Yeah. If you guys don't mind talking about it, it's kind of unusual to talk about it in public comments, but we can to let you guys know.
Well, if.
Is this the process? Is there something that should be done before we as a commission hear this?
Yeah, that's just it. I mean, if we, if they want to know ahead of time from us, we kind of need to know about.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Is there anything else?
I don't think there's anything wrong. We're no decisions are being made. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so no.
What do you think, Gene?
John? John looks concerned.
Okay, John too. Okay. Yeah, I just.
Sorry, Rita. I'm not, we're not trying to skirt around you, Rita.
Or maybe let her speak first and then I can.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. You expressed.
Just trying to keep it all in order and on the up and up and legal.
Um, so that we follow proper due process, uh, they really do need to go through the process. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wendling, um, hearing the facts before, um, we've actually presented a staff report and then, and actually in all fairness to them that they can present, uh, any arguments that they have, we really need to go through the proper procedure for that and public comment period is or section of your agenda is not the appropriate place. Thank you.
So what would be the appropriate process? Just so that they know.
To appeal, to file an appeal with board of county commissioners, if that's what they would like to do. Okay. Okay. We'll take them through that process.
Great. Thank you.
Come on downstairs after the meeting.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Thanks, Gene.
Thank you, guys. Best of luck. We sounds reasonable, but any other comments come before the commissioners here in the county resident comments, concerns and compliments? Excellent. Thank you. Then we will move on to our action items and tab C. Uh, approval and executing DC security and video surveillance contract with Kubel Group. Marty Dernovich, welcome aboard and.
Morning Commissioners.
Oh, there's Mr. Knight hanging out behind you.
Um, so what we have before you today, um, as you're aware, back in October, we presented, uh, the board with, uh, proposals from several, uh, I guess, companies that could provide this service to upgrade the security and surveillance system within the jail. At that time, the board had authorized us as a, as a group, meaning lieutenants from the detention facility, the IT staff, facilities and myself to go over, uh, two, two proposals that we felt were, were the most, uh, efficient ones to do the job that we requested. Then we came back before the board after that evaluation of those two vendors and we selected Kubel is the contractor that we would like to, to provide this service for us. At that time, we, we had a proposal from Kubel uh, in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars with the caveat that we wanted to meet with them, make one more walk through, through the jail, verify that we had everything we needed and that this system would last us eight to 10 years, possibly longer into the future. So with that, we have met with Kubel. IT has met with them several times since then. Um, and, and through the discussions with them and as they toured the jail again, took a final count of cameras, door locks, how many monitors, what size monitors we wanted in the control rooms, all of that stuff. The, the final price, um, is on, uh, exhibit C of the contract, which ends up being nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. It's still within the budget of the nine hundred and ninety thousand that the board approved back. Um, in that, the, the increases are after Tim had met with them. He felt like we needed to upgrade the server to a three hundred and sixty terabyte. Is that correct, Tim? And then we also added a door lock to the laundry room and a camera in that laundry room. So those are the additional costs. And, and then also the maintenance, uh, going forward. That language is all in the contract. Um, this, I, I will say this is one of the most difficult contracts I've written between the federal laws and then making sure we had our county stuff covered. And with the help of Christina and John and back and forth, uh, finally we got it narrowed down and got John's approval yesterday that the contracts are good and ready for the board to sign. So with that, we are asking that the board authorize the chairman to sign these. So with that, we are asking that the board authorize the chairman to sign these contracts will be two so that we have an original and the vendor has an original. And to execute this, so we can get this project underway, our goal is to have it done by June thirtieth. If there's any questions, hopefully Tim can answer them.
There you go.
Or John.
Thank you Murray. Questions?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Tom.
How much of this work is being done by the Kubel Group and how much is going to have to be done by your staff?
The majority of the work will be done by the Kubel staff. So we have some pieces to do with that and, but also with them.
I still want to see that stressed look on you.
It's still gonna be there.
Permanently there. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, when I looked through the contract, the exhibit anyhow, the final cost, it talks about excluded out of this eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar. Those excluded costs that are listed one through eleven will be probably additional costs to the county, is that correct?
No, those are just exclusions that they're not going to cover if they do come up, but they probably I don't, I don't, you know, I don't think there's much here. There's, there's probably a switch that we've already actually purchased. And if there's any field devices out there that are broken, meaning if any of the doors have locks that aren't working currently, then then we would have to fix those anyway.
Fix those anyway.
So, so this cost would be cost we would normally have to take care of regardless.
All right. So there isn't that much cost to those items. Okay, thank you.
Seeing them, then what is your pleasure commissioners?
Go ahead. I'll wait. Mr. Chairman, do you wish to have a two motions, one for the contract for you to sign as well as the exhibit? Cause you have signatures on both of them.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Go ahead Marty.
Exhibits is part of the contract.
All right, very good. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we approve the detention center, security, control and video surveillance system replacement project, which is explained in exhibits C final proposal for the amount of come on, get to the bottom page. There it is. Eight hundred, I'm sorry Marty, help me out.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred and
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one thousand.
Seven twenty-two.
Yep.
And no pennies.
Thank you. And authorize chairman's sign.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Give me a second.
Yeah. I'll say thanks. This is a big undertaking and I know you looked at many and it was a big project to accomplish and
Just like to make sure it's noted that this is not general fund money.
Excellent point to me.
This is money that will come to us through, is Marty here? I mean, not Marty, but through ARPA money, right Christina? Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Marty, thank you Tim. Worthy project, well needed, very needed.
And now the work begins.
Yep.
Is the sheriff happy?
Sheriff's happy, we're all happy. Tab D, Mr. Zimmerman, our district fire protection agreements. Our next tabs D, E and F.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support for this transitional project. Wasn't an easy one. I also want to thank you for your personal support for me running this project. So I appreciate all of that. And along with that, thank you to the commissioners that are outgoing, Commissioner Wendling, Commissioner Chairman, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Lloyd, thank you for your service. I too am finishing my council run tonight too. So I, I know what you guys are feeling. So thank you for that. So along on to the business at hand. First, the first one we want to mention here is Fire District One. So basically what we have here is, this is a win-win folks. Everybody's in agreement with it. It's gone smoothly. I did give you a handout before the meeting today. So this is the current monies that we spent on incidences. So you can look at that if you have any questions. We do have the major parties here represented except for Wamsetor. And so if, if you can, if you come up with any questions, feel free to, to stop us. But basically what it is, is it's minor verbiage changes to the existing contract. Every, we all got together and we all excited, decided to extend this agreement. And now it's here before you for signatures. What the, the biggest change was, everybody agreed they would like it to go from a calendar year to a fiscal year. So with it being the end of December and the, and the, this agreement has to be resigned. Everybody's decided to go eighteen months. So this agreement will take us through the end of June, two thousand twenty-four. So what that will do will get us on the fiscal year cycle. Everybody seems to think that after that, we can have automatic extensions. It is going very well. We do have, for this first one here, we have Scott Kitchener behind me. He would be more than happy to answer any questions. Scott leads the center portion of the county response, the center of the county. And he's also responsible for the seasonals. So he has several vehicles and seasonals, but like I said, everything's going really well and if Scott wants to say anything. So that's sign language for that's sign language for, if you have any questions. So if you have any questions for Scott, what we'll need for Scott is we'll need all the, all the commissioners to sign. Scott would like to stay after. I don't know if we want to take a recess after these three or whatever and get the signature signed. Scott once has his, he's meeting with his, his board tonight to get the approval. So he's going to wait for the commissioner's signatures if you so see fit. The same will happen with Green River. Green River is taking it to their illustrious council tonight. For signatures, which I'm going to have to abstain, I'm sure. So, but that's, that's where we're at. After this, it's, it's just going to be repetition. But on, on Fire District One, it's all five commissioners to sign. Any questions for Scott or I?
Questions commissioners regarding district fire protection agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tom.
I would just like to thank the partners. I know it was a difficult process, but we really appreciate you stepping up to the plate and helping us get through this transitional time.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Just want to assure that I actually was invited and actually went to when they did the negotiations. And I think I can report that I think everyone felt really good with how things were rolling moving forward. There was even talk about going, looking down the road with the new commission. It was some longer term contracts, so costs are set and aren't moving. So there was really good communication work and walk through the process and I'm just want to thank the partners for that process. And Jim, thank you for letting me be part of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any of the comments?
And of course, special thanks to our relationship builder, Mr. Zimmer and Warden Zimmerman. Whatever his title is, I'm not sure.
Then commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding district fire protection agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Feld.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sweetwater County Fire Protection District number one agreement as presented.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Tab E, on to the Green River Fire Protection Agreement.
Hearing number two, Green River, pretty much ditto. Again, everything's gone smoothly on the Green River agreement. All commissioners will need to sign on that also, on that particular one. Again, that's going to be presented before the Green River City Council tonight. So I'm sure that one of the guys, Chris probably will wait for that signed document so they can take it over and make it part of their agenda tonight. They had some verbiage changes, minor, all minor. The city of Green River was one that suggested that well, all, everyone suggested that we move it over to the fiscal year. And so that was a unanimous, but Green River also said that it's going very well and they, they wouldn't mind after this having automatic two-year renewals for the next five terms. So that's a ten-year desire to agree on that from the city of Green River. They're, they're, they're happy. Win-win folks. That's where it's at right now. Win-win for the county, win-win for these these associated support. I don't think I have anything else. If Chris or one of the chiefs would like to say anything, now's the time. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Any questions for us?
Questions at all regarding Green River Fire Agreement?
Thank you, Jim.
Then what is your pleasure commissioners?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to authorize the chairman to sign and approve the Green River Fire Contract.
Thank you. I'll have you sign as well. We all get to sign. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. On to tab F. And for signatures, we have a break coming up about nine fifty and we look to be on schedule. So we should have you out of here by 10 o'clock if that's okay. Onto tab F.
Wamsetor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last and certainly not least, Wamsetor Fire Department. Again, unanimous, desiring this, this agreement to go on. Loving the, the interaction between all of the agencies. Wamsetor has already signed this agreement. So there, they've, they quickly put this in, in, in motion, got all the significant people to sign. So on this one, all we're going to need is the chairman's sign and a secretary. Whether that's the clerk or I don't, I'm not sure I understand all of that. So it's, but it won't need this one, as you look at it, at the end of the Wamsetor agreement, it's just the chairman and secretary. I don't know if that needs to be notarized or not. Nothing really more to add. It was just small verb. I don't think there were any changes with Wamsetors. So went smoothly. Everything good. We should be good now till June of two thousand twenty-four on these particular agreements. Whatever, Mr. Chairman, commissioners would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions regarding Wamsetor's fire agreement? Then what is your pleasure commissioners?
Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Wamsetor Fire Protection Agreement and authorize chairman's sign.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Nice work. Thank you. And we'll get those signed here coming up at the break and actually a little ahead of schedule. We'll see if that changes. Usually does, doesn't it?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, as I ride away, I go out on a limb to say that I'm sure I represent the employees by saying, thank you for the, the stipend and the, the, the bonus holidays. Thank you so much for what this board has done.
Thank you. Thanks Jim.
I believe we are happy to help where we can. We are on to tab G, consider approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three congestion mitigation and air quality program grant award agreement. Christina Marsal, Mr. Legursky's just going to stay right there. Viva La France, almost. What a game.
The game, yes. So, yep, still, still recovering from that game. So Chairman Smith, commissioners, first off, I want to wish you all and my colleagues and the public happy holidays and a, and good health, happiness and lower inflation in twenty twenty.
Yeah, this is, this is good.
So.
You vote on that?
I hope it's unanimous. So, and I am joined with our Public Works Director, Jean Legursky. So the Wyoming Department of Transportation awarded Sweetwater County a congestion mitigation and air quality program grant. You all know it as CMAC. Project requires a twenty percent cash match and must be completed by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. The purpose of CMAC funding is to alleviate air quality issues created by energy development and other industrial activity in the vicinity. So Sweetwater County will use the funding to apply magnesium chloride dust suppressant to various county roads. This will create better road, a better quality road surface and also improve safety issues associated with fugitive dust from the roadway. So the total award is two hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars. The required match is sixty-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars. Again, that match is twenty percent for a total budget of three hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. So that magnesium chloride will be applied to approximately seventy-eight miles. I provided in the packet, a list of that road, of the roads, in case you were curious. Also, I'd like to point out that the required match was included in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. As you know, Gene is always at the mercy of the weather and going out to bid. So sometimes if these projects are not completed, it gets rebudgeted as well as the match in the next fiscal year. And then finally, one last point in the contract attachment sees the provisions for federal construction contracts. Want to let you know how complicating these awards are and thank Gene for his diligent work on it. So with that, I'm available for any questions or so is our Public Works Director.
Diligent work? Really? Okay. Questions regarding our CMAC grants? And no one likes fugitive dust. So that is good to hear. We're mitigating it. Then what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three CMAC program agreement. Recipient agreement between Wyoming Department of Transportation, Sweetwater County and authorize authorize chairman's sign.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Down with down with the dust. We're on to tab H, AML Surface Owner Consent, AML Project Number seventeen point two C Reliance Road, which is also County Roads Number forty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you is a surface owner consent for reclamation for the AML project that was stated. What they're doing is some exploratory drilling out in the Reliance area. Another project, I think this is their fifth one out there in the last six years. You know, just trying to get everything under control and find out where all the mine workings were out there from years. So what this does is it allows us to give them consent to be able to do this on our road and it also allows us to sign up for mine subsidence insurance in case something does happen for a year for free while they're doing the project.
So they're just looking, this is through the abandoned mines and, and they're looking for where mining had been done to help mitigate it?
Yeah, what they have to do is they go in and do exploratory drilling and then they follow up with actually grout project after they figure out where everything is. If you guys traveled the interstate between Elk Street and the Ninth Street exit in Rock Springs, that was done for, I mean, that's what they were doing on the side of the road forever. It wasn't part of the interstate project. That was actually an AML grouting project. Believe it or not, when you talk to Western engineers and geologists, some holes up there had 50 yards of grout, some had 1,500 yards of grout. It just depends on. To be politically correct, the mine maps aren't exactly completely accurate, as I'll hope to say. Sometimes they robbed all the pillars when they came out. Sometimes they went in other people's seams. It was just how it was. So they have to verify everything and, you know, use some downhole drilling techniques that were perfected in the oil field. They do a lot of stuff now. It's amazing what they do.
Great. And we're just giving permission for use of our roads and.
Well, use of our roads, use of them drilling in our road and, and the associated land around the right of way. And then also signing us up for insurance.
Perfect. Other questions? What's your pleasure then, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Feld.
I'll make a motion to approve the AML Surface Owner Consent for Reclamation and authorize chairman to sign on necessary documentation.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Onto tab I. Gene, you're still here with us.
So this is a continuation from last week or last meeting when we had to postpone it because not everything was done out there. The contractor did get out there the next day and, well, that actual night and the next day and correct all the problems. Everything looks good out there. There's a couple minor, very, very minor things that need to be addressed, but it's frozen, so we can't. There's a couple of small piles that are like a shovel full that need to be off the road and, and that's easily taken care of. And the contractor has assured us through emails that he will take care of that. Like I said, 20 minutes worth of work probably and it's done. It's just weather caught up to them and they couldn't do that. But I recommend that we approve Resolution 2212 EN-01 and the county takeover acceptance and maintenance of fire hole basin drive, branding iron drive and sage brush drive.
Questions for Mr. Legursky? Then what's your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-12-EN-01 Ranch View Estates Phase One Final Acceptance of Subdivision and Maintenance of Fire Hole Basin Drive, Branding Iron Drive and Sage Brush Drive as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? With a motion and a second, do we have further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicely done, Gene. Always a pleasure doing business with you. Onto tab J. Mr. Bingham, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to tell you, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Wendling and Commissioner Lloyd, and thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, for your kind words. I really appreciate that. It's been a pleasure serving or working for you for Commissioner Wendling eight years and Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Lloyd for four years. I appreciate your support and your kindness and everything that you, all the language amendments that we, we proposed through planning and zoning. And I just want to let you know, I do appreciate it. Maybe Commissioner Wendling, I'll see you in Mesquite one of these days. On the way down there, I'll see maybe Commissioner Wendling or Smith in Moab and maybe it's on the way to a Big Head Todd and the Monsters concert. Sound good? And I just dated myself by saying, Big Head Todd and the Monsters, just a lot of people don't know what that band, rock band is, but anyway, thank you. As a treat, this is an easy one. This is also a continuation. I really appreciate Rock Springs National Bank for doing a during our last commissioner meeting, actually doing a letter of credit for $10,000. And so as we've now accepted the roads, I think we need to recommend that we, this is an easy motion, not that big lengthy one I gave at the last one. So it's a release of $10,000 letter of credit for the warranty period. Thank you for Ranch View Estates.
Thank you. We were briefed, I will say, last time, brief is the right word, but updated last time, informed. So any other questions to Mr. Bingham regarding this issue? Then what's your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling?
I'll make a motion that we approve a release of letter for $10,000. Release of letter of credit for $10,000 for the Ranch View Estates subdivision warranty period.
Thank you. Is it just the chairman or is it everybody's sign?
I don't think there's signatures. Is there like?
No.
No.
Just a motion.
Even better. Even better. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Eric.
We're scheduled for a break in, in 25 minutes, a little ahead of schedule, so without Ms. Barry here to present our audit, let's take a break and come on back at.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we can, we could do the events complex board.
Oh.
Appointment and.
Let's do that.
We could even tab in, wouldn't take that long, I don't think.
I like your thinking, so let's.
Or even tam, tab M prior to the audit report. Our break. I mean, it's up to you.
I like it. Let's go. We'll go with tab L. Events Complex Fair Board Appointments. And we can have a discussion regarding this. Is there anyone who would like to lead that discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling?
Yeah, I first thought like, say, you know, there are a number of great applicants or always is for this fair board and the applicants that do serve on it really, really serve Sweetwater County very well. And for the most part, many of them have not served with a agenda. We've been very fortunate to for this appointment to have had Mr. Spicer, who is also the chairman of the Events Complex at the present time, and his work while on the board has been very, has been recognized and very much appreciated, but also his work prior to being a board member. When he was with a the beverage company, Western Beverages. Unbelievable amount of work he did for the Events Complex and supporting other activities throughout the county and that type of thing. So I just want to say those things before I say that I believe Mr. Spicer is available for another term appointment. And I would support, support that. I won't make a motion at this time because I think other commissioners need the opportunity to comment if they feel differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we also comment if we feel the same? Because I do.
Thank you.
I do feel the same and appreciate the, the work that's been done and, and would second everything the DACA said. So other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. I would be honored to have you continue, I'm sure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just would, I'm just kind of jealous that I gotta give the great diatribe on Bob because I feel, I'd just say, I'd say ditto and we're really lucky in the position on some of these boards to have great opportunities and and there's some even new names that impressed me on there too. And so, but I'm being part and being active at the Events Complex, Mr. Spicer is a constant person out there. I mean, God just as the board chairman, but as a volunteer, and I think he really breathes what the mission is. So I would strongly support we reappoint Bob. Mr. Spicer.
With that, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Bob Spicer to a five-year term to the Events Complex Fair Board.
Excellent. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. You're, you're stuck there five more years, Bob. You got five more. Thank you for the work. Much appreciated and candy. Tab, I should have put my glasses on. So Mr. McLean was going to answer questions for us. Ashley was going to come up, so let's go to tab N. Well. I guess we need Ashley for these two. Well.
They're on, Gary's on.
Yeah, it looks like they're on the Zoom.
Ashley told me, Gary, you can tell me. Ashley said she was going to present these items and you're just going to be available for questions. Is that true?
Yeah, she's on her way up. You guys are with your usual efficiency ahead of schedule there. I'm a little under the weather, but she's going to be up there and, and I'll be available if there's any questions.
Perfect. Well, we will.
Just a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We have the signed contracts for fire. I would say let's take a break so they could take the contracts.
I think they're signed, aren't they?
Yeah, well.
Oh, okay. Need to be recorded. Okay.
Well, here's Ashley. So let's go with that. Hi, Ashley. Good morning. We are on tab M. Request Approval of the 2023 UMR Financial Review Agreement. And Gary does sound under the weather, so.
I'm, let's see. So we are requesting that the chairman sign this UMR addendum, essentially no real changes for 2023 to 2024. But there is going to be an approximate 3% increase for medical claims processes by UMR.
Say that one more time.
There's going to be a 3% approximate increase on UMR processing the claims.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we are just requesting that the chairman sign the Financial Renewal Addendum.
Perfect. Questions for Ashley or for Gary? Then what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the 2023 UMR Financial Renewal Agreement.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion regarding this? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you. And on to tab N. The Employee Manual Policy Agreements. Oh, such a good topic, subject that we've been years long. It's been fun. Ashley, what do you have for us?
I am, we have a few things. So the first one that we're going to talk about is the Chapter Eight Absence for Work. And this is referencing the legislative leave. And so we have three options that should have been in your packets. I am, we are obviously proposing option two as we requested. But we do have the three options. Option one is keeping with the current policy and essentially letting anybody that is in a legislative office to still, I guess, to keep their pay, that they're going to get compensated for doing that position as well as what they make at the county. Option two, the proposed plan is going to be essentially where they maintain their full county pay, but they do not receive any legislative pay or that that part is paid back to the county. So they're not making anything extra. Option three is the grandfather option and that essentially keeps it so that anybody that has run for a legislative office this term and will keep their additional pay that they'll receive. And then any terms going forward or for anybody else that will be running, they will follow along with the option two of the proposed plan.
Thank you. We have had discussions regarding this. So Commissioners, what, what questions do you have or what comments would you like to make?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling?
Yeah, I think I'll just stay with option one because like I stated last time, you know, we started the conversation and worked on policy review after individuals committed to serve at the legislature. So I think we need to stay with option one. If future commissions wish to look at this, that'll be their call. But at this point in time, with regard to one or two employees who have going to be serving in the legislature, they ran knowing the expectations of our previous policy, which supports option one. I think it's only fair that we stand and deliver for them the policy that they ran under and support it and then it'll be two years and the rest, new commission can decide if they want to change it. So it's, I support option one for those reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner Wendling, and I feel much the same as I expressed last time. Commissioners, what, what other opinions do we have?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Feld.
I support option three for the same reasons that Commissioner Wendling stated in that the folks that have run while the policy was where it is right now, before change, expected that. And so I think we should allow them the grandfather in. But I do, and I expressed this at the policy meeting last week, I do feel that the double dipping in the additional funds. There's not many jobs that you're allowed to earn, leave and not have to use leave while you're out of the office, whether you're salaried or hourly. And so I think that our employees still get a good benefit of being supported while, while spending time with the legislature, but also not double dipping with our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners Lloyd or Tolman?
I affirm what Commissioner Shane Feld has just said. Option three would be my preference because it appears to be what most of the industries and the school districts are offering in the area.
Thank you. Well, looks like it's going to be marinating time for Commissioner, Commissioner Lloyd.
You know, I just think it would be.
He's going to go with option two.
It would, it wouldn't be right if I didn't have to vote yes, a vote on one of the last, the last on one of the big issues. I think I've been at the bad spot for four years, so why end that run here at the last meeting? So I, I, I actually lean toward the grandfather option that would allow employees that did run the last time to be able to receive the benefits. Because I do believe when they ran, that's what they expected. But I believe moving forward, the expectations should change because when I ran for commission and I, and I am was first elected, I ran a nonprofit and to, to be a commissioner, I had to take extra days off, use vacation time and and I didn't get compensated in my time here. And I think that's just a sacrifice that we make. And I think the fact that under, under that option, the employee still has strong benefits. They still can get paid and just only have to reimburse back a portion of that. So I, I, I go with the I prefer to go with the option three, which is the grandfather option, because I also don't think we should punish someone who ran for office under one perception, won that office and then change it on him. I don't think that's fair at all. So I think grandfather option three provides the best of both worlds.
Good discussion. Thank you, Commissioners. Any other comments before we entertain a motion? And what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve option three, the grandfather option as presented.
We have a motion for option three. Do we have a second?
Yes, I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Um, question, yeah, I have a quick question just to make sure. Just being somatics and reading the grandfather provision E for any employee who essentially ran for state legislature prior to November, November 1st, 2022, that would also include Mr., the person in question because that election wasn't until November 6th. So you could look at somatics saying that he count because he, the actual election day was November 6th. Are we still clear that a guy, someone in that situation will be clear? I just want to make somatically recovered.
Yes, because he ran still before.
Okay, because he announced before November 1st. Okay. I just want to make sure we clear and protect him.
Excellent point. Clarification. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Then all those in favor.
Chairman, roll call vote.
Roll call it is. We'll start on this end. Commissioner Wendling?
No.
Commissioner Smith, no. Commissioner Shane Feld?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you. Three, two, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on to your other item.
Perfect. So Chapter Seven was the other one that was brought up because of using FMLA for adult children. And so I believe how Brenda had edited and same with Gary. I believe how Brenda had edited and same with Gary um it were following the policies of the ADA as well as FMLA. So we're just referencing them. So if they ever change things, um, it's much easier for us to just reference their changes versus us changing our entire policy again.
Questions regarding? Questions regarding Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, just as I'm trying to pull it up, uh. The way it's presented, when we talk about the leave primarily it says grandchildren, is that or it says minor children? Yeah, I think we had that discussion a little bit at our last meeting. As much as we wanted and agreed that it should somewhat align or align with uh FMLA. We also believed that minor in my thinking and what I wanted to see done was that minor would be taken out and it would say just children and grandchildren.
Okay.
That was my understanding from our last meeting. Thank you, Mister Commissioner, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
So I'd like to see that amended or changed before it's approved.
Other comments?
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um. What we were referring to there was um, I I think our discussion um was around the issue of um coverage for non-minor children or grandchildren of being able to use sick leave in that context. And the both the FMLA and the ADA um not only address those issues. Um, but there's, you know, potentially other people. In other words, if your care is required to care for a grandparent or um an adult child or a brother or sister or you know, a whole number of things um because either you're the primary caregiver or because it's needed for their um healing process or what have you, um then then um both of those processes provide for a means to do that. And so the the reason that we included the reference to the to the ADA and the FMLA um not only does it encompass um adult children or grandchildren under those things, but also potentially others. And as you know, that the FMLA and the ADA are continuously evolving in that regard. Um, and so it seemed like uh we were trying to to synchronize something with very specific language when the ADA and the FMLA had broader language to cover those situations. Uh, we're happy to do either. Um, but um it seems like um there are others that potentially could be eligible, other persons that we haven't identified under the FMLA and ADA definitions. And so we wanted to make sure that we complied with that by um following those rules and those situations um for those uh individuals, which could be um um adult children or could be grandchildren or could be grandparents or could be others um in in those situations. So that was just the thought process. Because our goal, I think, from last meeting was to align those.
So it's, so you're saying that it's it, we will follow FMLAs.
And ADA.
And ADA's rules as they morph and change. So today it's one thing, I mean, it could change later, but we will continue to follow that so that we're abiding by the law.
Just Chairman and I understand that uh FMLA as well as ADA or whatever it is or does allow for children, minor, you know.
Minor and adult.
Minor and adult children, minor and adult grandchildren. And.
That's my understanding. Is that true?
Is that true?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
As long as it's covered for our employees, I don't, I really don't care what FMLA says. I mean, it's very important.
Yeah.
You can reference all you want, but our employees are going to look at the policy and say, what does it say for me?
Absolutely. And that's why we send out a certification of healthcare provider.
Yeah.
So that they um the doctors have a chance to also say what kind of needs are needed to be met from our employee, for example.
Yeah, it's important that our employees don't have to fight with HR and Board of County Commissioners to take care of their children, no matter how old they are or grandchildren, no matter how old they are or parents, vice versa. They shouldn't have to take time, waste their time fighting with HR office or the commission so that they can spend that time taking care of those individuals that need care.
Absolutely.
No questions asked, just let's remove the roadblocks.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Feld.
Um, I think that this language change does accomplish um what Commissioner Wendling is saying, and I agree that our our employees don't need to fight. Um, but I think it also allows for additional flexibility and um the ability for HR to not have to continuously check what ADA is saying. And I'm even more concerned about ADA than FMLA, but um ADA and FMLA are saying, and you know, they're they're keeping up with things um on the legal side. And I think that this covers us on both sides, and it also allows the flexibility for employees um to continue to improve um as the laws evolve.
I think we're all in agreement that we want to
Thank you.
take care of the employees. And it sounds like sounds like we are, at least that's our intent. We're trying. Then what is your pleasure, commissioners, uh regarding um resolution two, two dash one, two dash CC dash zero, three, the resolution to adopt amended personnel manual?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I will make that motion as presented.
Thank you. We have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion regarding this resolution and long running uh project of ours.
Special thanks to Gary and the HR department. It's been a long a long process and a lot of work. Thank you very much.
It's been great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Brenda's really taken a lead and so have you, Ashley, and that type of thing. And and Gary's had some oversight to make sure it follows it. So make sure that you two ladies know that we appreciate that as well. And thanks, Gary, for taking the lead and getting that stuff to us.
You're welcome.
Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Woohoo! That was awesome.
That's a lot of hours of work.
That was, and we put in a lot of hours and it wasn't even part of them. Should we break or we've got, we've got Mr. Barry here? Bonnie, how long will this be, do you think?
Got it scheduled for 30 minutes. I need to go.
Hey, you know, these.
Okay, then we will.
This, this, these contracts need to be resigned. There's a typo in the old one.
Oh, okay.
For the fire.
Well, then we'll take a break and we will be right on time.
I call the meeting of our county commissioners back to order. We are on tab L. Excuse me, we're not on tab L, we're on tab K. Approval of our auditor report, audit report. We have Stephanie Pickering on Zoom with us as well as Bonnie Berry here in chambers and. Bonnie, is Stephanie taking the lead? Stephanie, take it away. Welcome aboard.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for having me today. I'm going to go ahead and screen share. I just have a short PowerPoint today for you all. And it looks like you all can see it pretty well. But good morning. My name is Stephanie Pickering and I'm the partner that oversaw the audit of the of the county this year. I just wanted to kind of go over some highlights for you all. I believe you have a draft of the report and our expectation really is that there will be no changes to this report from what. I visit with you about today. The first thing that I want to start with is our audit committee letter. This also should have been included in the information while we're provided by Bonnie. By professional standards, we are required to communicate directly with you all as commissioners. About the progress of the audit through this formal communication that we call the the Audit Committee Letter. Had there been any issues that we encountered through the duration of our audit procedures? We would communicate those to you all through this letter. That also includes a reference, any sort of internal control issues or findings that we identified. Fortunately for you all, this letter is very boilerplate and clean. No real big issues, well, no issues at all to to communicate to you all today. But I kind of want to point out a couple of things this morning. In general, maybe to start as well. We work with a number of people throughout the county as well as the county's component units and. Bonnie, of course, is our main contact, but we also work with the County Treasurer's Office, the County Clerk's Office. A heavy amount of work done with the Southwest Counseling Services folks over there at that component unit, so. I can't name all of them, but I do appreciate everyone's assistance throughout the audit process. By. By your expectations, probably, and what we've come to expect is that management is well prepared for the audit. They provide everything to us very timely, answer our questions, are. Are just a big help throughout the audit process. We're actually out in Sweetwater County twice, so we come out. Late, late summer, early fall, and we do a lot of work with the component units and. The bulk of our testing on your federal funds, then we come back again. Later in the fall and November where where we work on primarily the the county's portion of the audit work. If you look at the letter, you kind of compared it this year to last year, it's going to be very apples to apples. There was one new accounting standard this year, GAFB eighty seven, that changed the treatment of how leases. Have to be accounted for under governmental GAAP. For the county, this really had no material impact to the statements at all. In addition, there were no changes to accounting policies, no significant or unusual items during the year and no disagreements that we had with the management. We're also aware of no instances where Bonnie or others attempted to opinion shop or reach out to another. Audit firm for a second opinion. Sometimes this can happen if there's some disagreement between management and the audit firm on. How specific items should be accounted for, but there were no instances of that this year. We also like to report to you all through the Audit Committee Letter. What we consider to be significant accounting estimates, and this is primarily due to the fact that accounting estimates by nature. Involve judgment and sometimes depending on the level of that judgment, that that estimate can be. Quite significant in terms of the judgment process and those those judgments also have bias. So within the county's financial statements today, there are four estimates that we just want to make you all aware of. That's the net pension liability, the OPEB liability, the allowance for uncollectible accounts receivable. That's at the Southwest Counseling Services Component Unit. And then the incurred but not reported claims on your insurance fund. The first one, the net pension liability, the county actually has no influence over. That is a hundred percent determined by WAMMing Retirement Systems and their board, but we do like to bring it to your attention. We provide or perform very specific procedures on any significant accounting estimates and through our audit work. We found the estimation process to be reasonable in all instances. Which is what you all want to hear when we talk about those estimates. All right, now jump into the financial statements for you all today, just a couple of highlights. And I'd like to be succinct and respectful of your time this morning. We do issue the county three opinions. The first is our independent auditors report on the financial statements and we do. Expect to provide an unmodified or clean opinion to the county. And this opinion begins on page one of the Financial In compliance Report. If you were to take a look at that opinion and kind of compare it to last year. The paragraphs have shifted around a little bit, this is due to some professional standard changes on our end. But I think that they actually make it a little bit more user friendly for you all as readers. So it really puts the opinion front and center in the new format as opposed to having it. You know, buried on page two or three in the prior year. That very first opinion paragraph talks about what what we did, so we audited, of course, the financial statements of the county. It also tells you that we did not audit the financial statements related to the hospital, so. The hospital engages with another audit firm, Clifton Larson Allen, and they they receive their own opinion. We do fold the hospital into the Sweetwater County Financial Statements, but the opinion paragraph there. Does let you all know that we we did not audit that and we rely on the work of that other auditor. The second paragraph of that tells you what the results were and it's very wordy. As accountants can be, but it says, in our opinion, based on our audit and the report of the other auditors. Accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the county. So very wordy, like I just mentioned, but this is the this is the cleaner unmodified language that you all are looking for. And that is the language we anticipate issuing once the audit is approved today. In addition to that, that opinion, we also issue two additional opinions. They begin on page ninety four and ninety five. This is our independent auditors report over internal control. On financial reporting and compliance. So under government auditing standards, we are required to consider internal controls at the county. As well as your compliance with any state statute, laws, regulations that might have a material effect over the financial statements. If we became aware of any issues in those two areas over internal control or compliance. We would be required to communicate that to you all through this second opinion. Again, much like the first one, it is a very clean opinion and boilerplate language. So no internal control issues over financial reporting that we identify during our audit. And no violations of laws or regulations or compliance with any sort of state statute that we also should communicate to you today. And then our final opinion for you all is our opinion over. Each major federal program is required by Uniform Grant Guidance, so this is your federal federal funds compliance opinion. We audited two programs this year and each year we audit. We audit PILT just by the nature of the program and the dollar amount, and then there's a kind of a complicated formula that we then follow to. To select the other programs. This year we only tested one other program and that was the opioid program. Run out of the Southwest Counseling Services Component Unit. Similar to that, have we identified any internal control issues in our. Audit of those programs, we would identify those to you all today through this letter. And we would also let you know if there were any compliance violations. And there were none in either category, so a very, very clean compliance audit as well. Looking at the financial information for you all today. Similar, of course, to prior years, the county basically issues two separate sets of financial statements, so. Your long term focused, what we call the government wide statements begin on page thirteen with the statement of net position. This includes all long term capital assets and long term liabilities like the net pension liability with WAMMing Retirement System. And the OPEB, those are, those are probably the three largest differences there. Your short term focused financial statements, which are much more alike to your your budget. You all approve each year are your fund level or governmental fund statements. And those begin with the governmental funds balance sheet on page sixteen. And then the income statement equivalent for your governmental funds then begins on page eighteen. And in addition, then you have one internal service fund, same as last year, your insurance fund. Those financial statements are on page twenty and twenty one. And then your custodial property tax fund, the property taxes that you collect and then distribute out to. To the respective governmental entities that. That are owed those levies begin on page twenty three and twenty four. Just a couple of highlights then, I'd like to focus really just on the primary government to the county. Counties activities within the statement of net position today. So if you take a look at page thirteen, you did have an increase in assets this year of almost three million dollars. And of course, every year you have fluctuations up or down in any account balance, but maybe some highlights today. A decrease in cash this year of about four point three million dollars. Your property tax receivable actually increased eight point one million dollars, so offset that cash decrease. For those of you that have been following property taxes and kind of some changes at the state. Related to Senate File sixty, there had been some changes in how. Ad blorum taxes, mineral taxes are assessed and collected. That had a change in your property tax receivable at year end. And then you also had a capital, capital assets decrease this year of one point seven million dollars and that's primarily due to. Accumulated or to depreciation expense, I apologize. Looking at the liabilities, a decrease of about five point seven million dollars. Two larger decreases in WAMMing Retirement Systems, net pension liability and the OPEB liability. These are going to fluctuate wildly from year to year depending on assumption changes and how the market changes, so. Those really have, the county has limited impact on what those liabilities. Look like at year end, they're driven by actuarial valuations, but of course, they do impact ultimately that liability number at year end. Those decreases also had an offset then in unearned revenue. This is related to federal grant monies that you've received in advance, but not yet met the requirements to recognize as revenue. As well as, of course, the changes with Senate File sixty of property taxes. Taking a look at your income statement equivalent to the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in that position. Revenues decreased this year about six point eight million dollars. Four point four of that is related to property tax revenue. And this is really driven by assessed valuations in the county, so those change year to year. For the year in which the revenue is recognized here, your your property valuations were down a little bit. Also saw a decrease this year due to investment loss of about a swing from last year to this year of seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Last year, the market was really great, as we all know, at the end of June this year, the market had kind of swung the opposite less favorable direction. Then your federal revenue related to those those grant monies also decreased this year about two point one million dollars. If you looked at your SEPA, your Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Last year, I think you had about ten million dollars in spending there and this year that had decreased. Proportionately with kind of your change in federal revenue there. Finally, you did see a decrease in expenditures. The bulk of that hits your change in net pension liability for the same reasons, just kind of changes and assumptions and. And how that liability gets calculated by the actuary. And then overall, for the primary government, Sweetwater County as a whole, you did see a decrease in that position. This year of about eight point nine million dollars. However, if you were to take out the effects of the net pension liability as well as OPEB. You would not have a decrease in that pension liability or in in your debt position. Those kind of two bigger liabilities really do influence your net position at year end. A couple of notes to point out for you all today, note five is property taxes. I generally would point this out other than it does disclose kind of the changes with how the. Ad blorum mineral taxes are now collected and instead by the county, that's done by the state, and of course, that changes. Your cash on hand. Note six and note eighteen are WAMMing Retirement Systems, the OPEB commitments. Again, just because of how large those liabilities are, the assumptions that go into them and the volatility. That can happen through those liabilities based on those assumptions. We think that those are just important disclosures for you all to be aware of as commissioners. And with that, I kind of get to the end of the information that I was hoping to share with you all today. I would be happy to take any questions that you might have about the audit process or. The the Financial In compliance Report today. But then maybe one just big final thank you to Bonnie. She really does coordinate everything from beginning to end for us throughout the audit process and we really appreciate. Her time and efforts to make sure that we get in and get out and. That the county provides a quality product to us to audit and then, of course, a quality product that we can then. Provide to you all as commissioners, so a big thank you to her and her team.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, much appreciated and Bonnie, thank you for coordinating with them and working with them and. Like she said, get him in quick and get him out quick, then there's less things to look at and you know, the more you dig, the more you find and it's it's never good, so. We appreciate you having what they need when they need it and sending them on their way, so. Very well done, much appreciated. Questions for Steph or did Bonnie, do you have anything else to add? And questions for Stephanie or perhaps for Bonnie commissioners? Then I would accept a mo- or would entertain a motion to accept the. Audit report that has been presented to us.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Stephanie, thank you so much. That's a bundle of work and. Between you and Bonnie, appreciate you keeping us on the straight and narrow and in line with everything we need to know, so much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good. With that, we are on to executive session.
Forty minutes.
We'll change that. That'll change. So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Need a break for.